It's called meeting order, invocation by schools and we remain standing for the be just a leader.
We will as Father has. Most gracious Father, Lord Jesus, we come giving honor to you. Father, we understand that prayer without listening for an answer adds up to foolishness. Father, we pray while we pray, Father, that we listen for your voice, that you guide us in these meetings. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May be seated. Roll call please.
Mr. Powers, Mr. Knight, Mr. Bennett.
Present.
Mr. Collins.
Present.
Ms. Flora.
Present. Okay, honors and recognition, do we have any?
Yes, yes. In light of the severe weather we had last week, I just wanted to recognize some folks that were well-prepared. It was a pretty severe storm pretty far out of Alabama and I thought that in light of that severity, that things went fairly well. So, David Logan with the emergency management folks, our local Aldoc folks here in Yufall, they were out, I had the pleasure of being outside Tuesday night and they were out sanding bridges and they did it several times, so we didn't have the problems hopefully on those bridges that would have had if they had not done that. Our Alabama power crews and our vice president, Richard Hutto here was in constant contact with me, updating me of outages and problems and situations and what they were doing about them. And I want to say that they had crews already here on site anticipating severe weather, so that expedited getting things up and running quickly. I hope, we did have some outages and I hope no one was inconvenienced for anything at the time, but you may have noticed that around the city, a few weeks prior to that storm, the crews in here trimming limbs off of vines and that was, that's something they do, Richard won't, three years in. Had they not, had that not happened, it could have been really bad. And had we had several more hours of sleep, luckily the good Lord stopped the sleep and we didn't have near the tree damage that we could have had. We had quite a bit of tree damage, but that trimming ahead of time really helped eliminate problems. And then our city folks, our police department, they were, we had nine officers out on the road Tuesday night patrolling and looking and I think I saw most of them, they were on the move. And Tim, Public Works, Tim was out on the back for most of the night, weren't you, moving limbs and getting them out of the road? And we appreciate that. I think you have some folks, Bob from the Horticulture Department also, and also our fire department, they all had to work in that weather and I just wanted to recognize them. You know, we had some minor accidents received, but not anything serious, no serious injuries in spite of those conditions that we had, which was pretty severe in Yufall. That was well done. The coordination between all of those groups was just excellent and I just wanted to recognize them for the hard work that they did last week. So, Tim, you want to say anything about limb pickup? I know there's a lot of debris and yards.
Yeah, we got a lot of limbs throughout the city, but the guys, they're gonna try to work each day, each day, they're down their route so they get that route done. We didn't quite get through out in Davis Road and one other area today, but we're going there first thing in the morning and then start on my huge route. But the guys, they're gonna, they're gonna work just about every day until they get through each route.
Have a good bit of limb debris and the assistance to get them down to the curb.
Yes.
That's all that happened.
And, Tim, while you're standing, I want to especially congratulate you. I don't think we would have been able to get out of Forest Hill, but on two days, Tim brought sand over.
Four times?
Yeah, four times in all, but I'm talking about two times before, before it came and I mean, we didn't have any problems. And I just want to personally thank you because you helped a lot of lives or, you know, get out from over there and I just think it needs to be known what you did and we'll let you know that we really appreciate what you did. All right? Okay, at this time anymore, honors, our recognition. Okay, we need a motion and approval to approve the agenda for the night.
Make the motion we approve to send the agenda for the night.
All right, it's been properly, and it's been properly moved. And second, any question? All in favor, let it be known by the word "a". All right? Eyes have it. Ladies have it. Okay, motion pass. Next we have on is the consent agenda. Each councilman has been given an agenda to review and to see if you have any corrections. On the consent agenda, you got, we're gonna dispense with the approval of the consent agenda and approved in January the 23rd, 2014, and also a claim docket of January 30th in the amount of $6,474.55. There's no changes, I need a motion on the consent agenda.
Motion we approve the consent agenda.
All right, it's been, motion?
Second.
It's been properly moved. And second, any question? That, motion carried. Okay, next, Mayor, take care of you or you got a little?
I got another, I can hear it.
All right, we want to listen to you.
If you fall very long, I think you probably know Sergeant Bobby Gilbert.
Yes, sir.
Police department, he is deployed with the 11-03, National Guard here, Kandahar, Afghanistan. Unfortunately, Bobby had come home on emergency leave, his sister passed away, so he came home on emergency leave, but when he did, he brought the city, he fought a flag that was flown over the 11-03's command. And we got Kandahar, Kandahar Airfield, Afghanistan. And I think you always have that specifically the law. Here it is. And I'll read it, it says, "This is certified that the company flag was flown over the headquarters of the 11-03 Combat and Sustainability Force Battalion, Kandahar Airfield, Afghanistan. This flag is flown in honor of the city's small paritists on January 18th, 2014, signed by the company commander of the Navy. We're gonna, we're gonna get a nice case for this and display it at the city halls."
Okay.
These guys are, these guys are, I think they're halfway through their form, please keep their families and then in your thoughts and prayers, we can ask them home safe and actually, we'll sit up here pretty soon.
Thank you. Okay, before we go any further, we got, we down to our visitor's part. And before we start with the visitor's part, I want Joy to kind of read this. Now, the purpose we are doing this, I want everybody to understand this, we don't recognize you tonight by raise of hand, but you've got to throw for no more than two to three minutes. And you will address the council, you will not have any more of this back and back, we won't have that anymore because really we're having confusion, it's just out of order when you say like that. I want you to hear it first, and if you don't have this topic, this is for an immediate approach. We're gonna begin this immediately, next, our next council meeting, if you don't, listen to her now, because if you don't have it in writing, if your name is not on the agenda, we will overlook you unless at the beginning of the meeting you are approached and give me your name or give Mr. Powers. Go ahead, read it.
City Council President Bob Powers since now announced an agenda for signature change for the policy of council meetings. Individual's questions to address the city council during city council meetings must contact Terry Bush, the mayor's assistant, or Joy White, city clerk of the district, and request to be placed on the agenda. Their request would include the topic to be presented and be made at least two work days typically Thursday before the city council meetings, which are normally held the first and third Monday of each month at 5:15. If the individual wishes to ask questions, the question should be reading and providing at the time of the request. Before this change, during the agenda, the chair of the city council meeting, the city council president or the city council president, ask those in attendance if anyone wish to address the council. This approach, though convenient and simple, has proved to be inefficient, confusing, and nonproductive on numerous occasions. Requiring questions for the city council to put in writing will help ensure a better understanding by the city council, mayor, and staff of the questions being asked. It may expedite a response prior to the city council meeting, therefore being made, being more timely and convenient for the individual making the inquiry. For those situations where individuals wish their inquiry to be a matter of public record, it is important that the city council mayor, department heads, and staff have adequate time to prepare, research, and coordinate so that a response is timely, adequate, and accurate to the best of their collective efforts. The objective of this change is to improve communications, facilitate understanding, and provide more accurate and timely responses from the city council mayor and department heads.
Now ladies and gentlemen, I hope that's clear and I hope we abide by the rules. Please ma'am, please sir, go according to this. If you don't have one, get one before you leave so you can get familiar with it and go by the change. Please ma'am, please sir. I don't think that's asking for too much, I know. Now, the floor is open for visitors. All right, Mr. Thomas, remember.
It won't change, I got to say, personally, it's our sake, I've been preaching for a moment that we don't have enough holy sauce to do the job in Yufall on the chair. Every time I look around and we've got three holy sauces to be done, whereas I see, we got a problem. It showed this weekend with another memory, Paul, was executed, I won't call it shot, but it was executed. We gotta do something to get more holy sauce in there and get the job done. If we can't do that, we might as well go home and everybody get done. All right? We asking for trouble, we can't keep going on. I don't want, I'm too, I'm so glad Mr. Powell will be here, so I can learn more and I'm not gonna tell him to spread too much rumor when it comes to election of a school. I need to remember you from this audience here, you guys, all you gotta do is recommend to send the resolution up to let them kill. I got six grand and one challenge if you're trying to save the school. I'm not saying Louis Charles or Lucius Charles is not doing a good job.
Me and Ozeal.
I mean Ozeal, I'm sorry. Now, I said you're not doing a good job.
Makes you a clear guy.
Well, it's clear and correct, but I want you guys to pass a resolution and send it up to Mr. Forte, so he can get this thing done. And then if they kill it, I will have a lawyer, but I'm not done just falling to the wayside and I'm not gonna be insulted by Bob Powers. He's a man like I am, but I don't want to thank you, David, by integrity and me here, I'm not that kind of guy.
Okay, Joy, you gotta respond to this. Mr. Thomas.
I did look on the secretary on the state website and we did find on January 2000, there was some kind of bill that was passed and he started on the office on the secretary.
Yeah, I'm passing the bill without the resolution to go forward. We voted true enough. I need the resolution from you guys so we can get to the state, let them approve it or disapprove.
And that's, in its state, population, city populations are 200,000.
We'll get back with you, that's the problem.
How you gonna get back with me because I'm at a point where I'm tired of the bull.
Okay, we gonna work through, we'll get back with you sometime this week, sometime this week. Now that, it befurinates me.
The next time I come in here, this office by guys that's respected and expecting to do the right thing, you know, I'm coming with a lawyer.
Okay.
All right, I want you to know, I'm not just gonna roll over and say you got a phone because you're not gonna get a phone.
That's fine, we got you. Mr. Reverend Green.
Thank you, sir.
L.C. Green.
Thank you, sir. First, I want you to stay here, Mr. Mayor, it may not be his fault, but he was given recognition, working with the Buffalo Soldiers, the Minnesota, we had two shelters open for local homeless people or anybody that needed to go. And we kept it open, we were doing the whole, doing the whole bad work. I went right on, let y'all know. And then last morning, let that be known.
We'll try that, okay.
This, we had a shelter, but what I come for tonight, what I come for tonight is to request that our leaders, called press cops, in all of the local areas, where we can denounce the killings, where we can denounce the drugs that's going on in Yufall. Yufall, Yufall has, nobody else wants to say it, but Yufall has a drug problem. Every other person who's still on the street is selling drugs because it's a big business in Yufall. And the fact that our leaders are not saying anything, the street is killing us. There's all kinds of stuff being said out there in the street. And if one side talking and the other side is not talking, the only thing we got to go by is what's being said out there and that's a lot of false and wrong information out there in the street. If you listen to the people in the street, they telling y'all they're into the drug trafficking. If you listen to the talk in the street, so I was wondering if it's any way possible, I know, I know that TV station number 12 would come and I know those would come, that's the two stations that we watch in this area, and I know Columbus paper would come. If you, and then over the police department and the mayor would call a press cop, those folks would come. And we gotta let it be known to the citizens of this community that we denounce the killing, we don't want that in this city. And we denounce the drugs. Every time somebody get killed, the word out there is drugs, if you know the drugs are out there, you know, don't you know that before you get killed? And that's, that's my request.
Thank you, I just want to say you, you are behind, we already, we already got it in the making.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Uh, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Never stand before and say you're not concerned, and that's not what I'm saying. Nor am I counting all the murders to the drugs. The drugs problem is a problem all by itself. Whether nobody get killed or not, we still got a drug problem in this town. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't stand here and insult you and say you don't, none of you don't care. That's not what I was saying, that was not my point. My point is that we need to inform folks that our leaders don't want this. And I know you're doing all you can, I know the meetings and all that is fine, but all I'm asking y'all to do is just the public that denounces this kind of stuff.
Thank you. All right, we, minimum visitors? Yes, sir.
Harry Perkins, concerning this, I do understand it and I do understand the need for it, but even this week, last week, when I go to download the agenda, it's not available or it's not filled out yet. And I couldn't get it till 10 o'clock today because the website was down or some other reason. If you're gonna do this, this is fine and great, but give the public a chance to speak on or review something. Have it up before Thursday if you want us to be able to let you know what our questions are before, you know, by Thursday. Have it up before then so we can make adequate preparation, make an intelligent question. Please respect that, give us a chance if something comes up, just like opportunity came up, does, a couple of weeks ago, that nobody up there knew that there were people exempt from the new tax increase. You know, and they're not trying to sandbag anybody, but the public needs to know it and we need chance to be able to make intelligent questions, make, make intelligent questions. So we need, if you're gonna ask us to do this, please give us enough time. There's several questions I'd like to ask today, but I'm, we're right here at the front and maybe my question addresses something important and it makes no sense.
Thank you, sir. We'll do that, we respect your wish and we ask you to respect ours. The only thing we're saying is that give us the time for your questions to come in so we can give an intelligent answer.
I have no problem with that.
Yes, sir.
Ron Cassidy. First of all, and it comes after something I'm wanting to address the council with, came up today. Mr. Knight, if you will look at Resolution 5-2014, paragraph five, would you please read that and I'll see if it matches the copy that I got off the website?
Where is the city ball is committed, is that where you're talking about? Where is the city ball is committed to provide the reference cost $8,014.16 as well as provide the police patrol, litter maintenance, and provide aid for the cost of necessary security devices and installation.
Okay, is the word "and" in yours?
And, yeah.
Okay, then means something else is to follow. Also, I know the county commissioners and they're good friends of mine, but I don't want to give them a blank check that says we're gonna play no matter what, and that's what this paragraph implies. Now, you can deal with it any way you want, but you need to read it and you need to put some limits on it. And if you're going to require, and I think the idea of requiring the questions in advance is excellent, I really do, but I think that we need, if you want us to have our answers by Thursday to you about questions, it needs to be up on Tuesday for us to have a chance to even look at what's gonna happen at the next council meeting.
Again, we see it, we gonna work with you.
Okay.
We hope you work with us.
All right.
Okay. And we gonna get with the county commi, the Chamber of Congress, we gonna work this thing out, we have already got it on, 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 on record and on paper, so we gonna go with this procedure. All right, any more visitors? Good show. Thank you. All right, now the resolutions, Resolution 4-2014, accepting the child, Christ child surplight exception, what are the wishes of the council on this? I don't know if you agree with it, we discussed it. We discussed Resolution 4-2014. It's been properly moved and settled. All in favor, let it be known by the word "a". Opposing, the same way, eyes have it. Resolution passed. Next one, Resolution 5-2014, that's the proposed resolution for Forest Hill. We've been discussing this for months, 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 and months. We've gone over this at different meetings, worked it out with the city, I mean with the county commissioners, we think we got this resolved and we want to get the resolution so the commissioners, and before I finish this, Mr. Franklin, just raise your hand, let them see you there, I don't know if everybody know you, Mr. Franklin and then Mr. Gilmore. We wanna, we wanna work it out so that this can be worked out, it has been satisfied. So now, what is the wishes of the city council concerning this resolution? Resolution 5-2014. Make a motion that Resolution 5-2014, yeah. We got a motion, whoever's settled. Counselor, all right, it's been properly moved and settled. Any questions? All in favor, let it be known by the word "a". Opposing, eyes have it. We did our part, we looked here from you. All right. Next one, Resolution -6, 2014, that's accepting the low bids of police uniforms and leather. If you had a chance to look at it, what are the wishes of the council on this?
Commandment 6-2014.
All right. We got a motion and a settlement. Question? All in favor, let it be known by the word "a". Opposing, the same way, eyes have it, motion carried. Thank you. All right. Now we're down to the board appointments. We got a board appointment for the rescue squad and we got Mr. Don McKinnon, who already desired to be reappointed to this board for three years, board of directors, board of directors. The chair has any other nomination? Any other nomination? Any other? All in favor, Mr. Don McKinnon, let it be known by the word "a". All opposing? Mr. Don McKinnon has been reappointed to the rescue squad board for a term of three more years. Mr. Doc, I mean Dr. James Lockwood, he has, he has decided to be reappointed also. What is appointed? Any other? Any other? All right, all in favor, Dr. Lockwood being reappointed, let it be known by the word "a". Opposing? Day, eyes have it. Dr. Lockwood and Mr. Don McKinnon has been reappointed, reappointed to the rescue board of directors for a term of three years. On the next city council, I think we need to look for Southeast Solid Waste Authority, we got Mr. Jason Bennett, who terms expire February the 8th, and we got Mr. Tim Brummel. His term expires February the 8th, so we need to be keeping those two in mind. All right, now we go to the fines.
Thank you, Paul.
Okay. Do we have any, do we have any other nominations for Solid Waste? Do we have any other? All right, let's start with Mr. Bennett. All in favor, Mr. Jason Bennett, Solid Waste Foundation Authority, which is a term of four years. All in favor, let it be known by the word "a". Opposing?
Aye.
All right, eyes have it. Motion carried. Mr. Jason Bennett back on that, for a term of four years. Now, Mr. Tim Brummel, his term also expires February the 8th, for Solid Waste Foundation, so have a motion.
Seven.
All right. All in favor, Mr. Tim?
Aye.
And opposing? All right, Mr. Tim Brummel, he's gonna be here later. Term of four years, congratulations on that. All right, now we come to the report from the finance committee.
No.
All right, education, the absence of regulation, Mr. Lucius, treating sanitation.
No reports, other than we got the reports in the back.
Okay. All right, in the finance department, we got... All right, and the Finance Department, we got reports, information items on the, in the bag. Other than that, that's it, I, please keep doing a good job, and do have a motion through there. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.